For now, I'll.
Thanks, Katie. All right, thank you, and everyone, welcome to the February 28th meeting of the Whistick and School Board. Our policy in the boardroom is to require masks. So if everybody will please put a mask on, and then we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you. If you're not comfortable wearing a mask, you can certainly join us from Zoom at home. Katie, can we begin with a break? Yes. Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Your Badger?
Here.
Mr. Leefo?
Okay.
Ms. Kiyachi?
Yeah.
Mr. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Ms. Karen Ickes?
Here.
Dr. Morris?
Here.
Mrs. Ginsberg?
Here.
Thank you, Katie.
And Morgan Wilson. The nine present, zero absent, and one student.
Thank you.
All right, well, please, everybody through me and saying please. Again, welcome, everyone, and for those just joining us, we are requiring masks for our meetings, so please keep your masks on. The first section of our agenda just lists out the prior meetings that we had. We have a meeting on February 7th, followed by a racial equity oversight committee on the 14th, a budget workshop on the 15th, policy committee meeting on the 16th, an MCIU board of directors meeting on the 23rd, and the North Monaco joint operation meeting on the 23rd as well. We have a few upcoming meetings listed in Section 3. Our March 7th will be our next regular public meeting. The 14th will be our next budget workshop, which is open to the public, and I encourage anyone interested in learning more about our budget to attend. On the 21st will be our North Monaco joint operation meeting. 21st also is the racial equity oversight committee meeting. The 23rd is the MCIU board of directors meeting, and then the 28th will be the work, the next public work section, session, excuse me. All right, now we will have our presentations. The first one this evening is the Whistick and High School Monthly Highlights.
Hi, everyone, hope everyone's doing well. I'd first like to start off by talking about our cultural recognitions and celebrations. So this February, WHS honors and recognizes the cultural achievement, the culture achievements and contributions of Black Americans during Black History Heritage Month. This month provides an opportunity to acknowledge the essential role that Black Americans have played and continue to play in America's making. In March, we look forward to acknowledging and recognizing the achievements and contributions of women during National Women's History Month. We would also like to give a shout out to our CASA Club for their great work this month to recognize Black History Month. Now, we would also like to talk about our, our fan-student event. We held Silent Night for our basketball, our boys' ba, boys' and girls' basketball team two weeks ago, and it was a great event. A lot of students came out and they were able to show, show off their great school spirits. We like to thank all the students that came out and supported our basketball, basketball teams. The boys' swim team participated in the SOL Liberty Division Championship. During their meet, we had over 46 personal time drops, along with several relay time drops. An individual, an individual outstanding swim was Jack Johnson, who dropped 20 seconds in his 500 freestyle. We would also like to give a shout out to Nick DiNafrio, Nate Valentine, Tyler Schilling, Carmen Shoppe, and Jordan Quimby for making district considerations this season. The boys' basketball team finished the regular season with a 14-8 overall record, 11-15 SOL league. The Trojans entered a 21 seed and will be playing at Nor, oh, we did play at Norristown last, or last Friday, and unfortunately, we, we lost, but it was still a great season, and I'm proud of the boys for doing well. The girls' basketball team finished regular season with an 8-14 overall record, 5-11 SOL record. The girls improved in the win column from last season, adding two overall wins and a four-win improvement in SOL league play. The girls look forward to working hard this offseason to continue to improve in the win column over the next season. On January 19th, the wrestling team hosted Upper Dublin in a battle for the Ambler Cup. While Upper Dublin came out on top on the mat, the Whistick and Wrestling Team, Whist Nation, and the Kellen Ford Foundation were the real winners. Wrestling Team all wore KS, chose Choose Happiness knit caps while being in, while being introduced, and then took pictures with Mike Ford and Kristen Kane at their meet. It was a great, awesome event, and I'm so proud of the guys for helping out. The girls' swim and dive team finished their regular season with a big win over Upper Marion, which was followed by a senior night celebration. We would like to give a shout out to Ava Walters, Maddie Johnson, Reagan Sontoro, Bernice Fu, and Sarah, Sarah Pickle for all making events and podiuming. That's it for us.
Thank you so much for that exciting update. Does anyone have any comments or questions? No? All right, well, thank you so much. All right, then we'll move to the next item on our list of presentations. And actually, we're going to swap, we're going to do the school start and end time advisory committee updates first, and then we'll move on to the health and safety plan.
Okay, thank you. First, before I go on, morning, congratulations to you on a really successful basketball season. And I know it's a passion of yours, and so we appreciate that very much.
Thank you so much.
The school start and end time advisory committee has been established. You may recall, we've had conversations in this forum about exploring the idea of adjusting school start times. This advisory committee now has at least two people from each school, that's parents who indicated an interest, at least one staff member, and at least one student from grade six to 12. We'll have a lot of perspectives represented. This group does not do any of the work, per se. This group is intended to review the work that the district leadership team puts in, give ideas, share feedback, and then we'll roll that into revisions that get presented in this forum throughout the course of the next 20, well, 17 months from now, because it's important to remember that nothing is on the table for school start times until the 23, 24 school year. It's a very long process. We'll take lessons learned from other districts that have done this. Advisory Committee will consider some things like transportation, or childcare, sports, performing arts, all the things, all the layers. And then regularly brought back to this forum for updates and additional feedback.
Great, thank you for that update, Jim. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments for Jim? No? All right. Well, again, thank you so much. All right, now we will move on to our health and safety plan presentation, Jim.
Okay. So tonight, we have a few slides on update for the health and safety plan. It's obviously a topical conversation in the community, and some developments that happened over the last 72 hours that I think are very important to share. So the purpose of tonight, we'll review our existing protocols. We'll share out the survey results that took place about 10 days ago now, and some other considerations, and then we'll explore our options for moving forward. So currently, as we know, there is a health and safety plan. All, all districts are required to have this document. Ours was amended recently on December 13th. You may know that, you may recall that our, our plan ties us directly to the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. And the, including the topic of masking, and the way it stands now, the district has to have a different level of masking for, or transmission level for two weeks in a row before a new level, before a change in masking takes effect. So this is the current thing, and there's lots of, lots of problems with this current arrangement. It was good when it started, it doesn't really work now. Part of the problem now is, these are the four levels that are in place now. And I won't go over all the details, obviously, but it has to do with your incident rate in the district and a positivity rate in the district. Those may have been relevant, or shall we say, useful at the beginning of this, they're much less useful now. And it's really hard for districts to get out of high or substantial, and as you can see, those are where masks are required. As a...
I'm sorry, Jim is in the middle of his presentation, please wait until it's off the screen for public comment. We're not a public comment yet, if you'd like to make a public comment. We're not a public comment yet, please sit down and wait till public comments.
This is an example of how it's so difficult to get out of high or substantial, and this is the problem with the current construct, is that we've been in either high or substantial for the whole school year. And this is an example of why districts are considering changes, and thankfully, as we'll speak about in a little bit, the CDC has issued a way away from this and into some better indicators. So the survey results. We had about 50% response rate from students and families, a little over 58 for staff. So that includes, in terms of the students, about 2,500 respondents. Those are the two questions we asked. And of the students who responded, remember, that's about half of the student body. Keep with the current plan, which is almost 50%, and change the mask optional, which is 40%. And then of the staff, we, we had the same results. There was a supplemental question that was to do with vaccination status, again, just another data point of the students who responded. This were, these were the results for students, and this, we had this information on file already. This is the information for staff. So other considerations, this is the important new information that was released just Friday afternoon, 4 o'clock PM, new CDC guidelines. Now, the CDC recommends only three levels. So, so they're recommending junking the old four-level routine and going to three. And they have different metrics now, different, in my opinion, much better metrics for where we are now. Largely getting at hospital stress, either hospital emissions or hospital capacity, also some measure of case count. And masking is only required when the county, and this is again, but now this is by county level, not district. County is in high status. Montgomery County is now in medium status. There's only really a handful of PA counties in high, and none of them are nearby. There's a lot to this CDC change, there's a lot of detailed rationale. I think they've done a really excellent job of explaining the rationale behind the metrics. We'll post what we can on our website, I'm not going to clutter up this tonight, but their, their website, cdc.org, is really good with that, too. Other considerations, what are other districts doing in the county? I asked the six contiguous to us, which would be Upper Dublin, Colonial, Norristown, or Penn, Haverhorsham, and Methacton. Of those five have moved to masking optional. One, Norristown, is waiting on Office of Public Health, which appears will be mirroring CDC, but it's not clear as yet. There's convincing research, another consideration about what's known as one-way masking, which is now not so much masking to protect others, which was the case in the early days of the pandemic before Omicron. Now, with research of a really properly fitting mask, KN95, and vaccine boosted, you can really do a really good job of protecting yourself. That's what's known as one-way, that's important. There are legal challenges on both sides to this. Some districts that have required masking were challenged legally. Some districts that made masking optional required legally, or were challenged legally, rather. And a very real thing to consider is both masking fatigue and the fatigue of those asked to enforce the masking. Masking enforcement fatigue is a very real thing. So moving forward. Now, this is not any order of recommendation, this is just options. We could certainly keep things the way they are now. We've discussed how the, the existing metrics aren't very good anymore, four levels don't really help. We could wait for the Montgomery Office of County Office of Public Health to revise their recommendations. They say they're going to be based on CDC, but so far, I don't have any indication of exactly when they'll be out of writing. That's an option, I don't know. An option that some districts have taken is devise their own metrics for when to require versus option, for example, the percent of each building that it might be out with COVID, and they give them time. That runs the risk of being arbitrary as you pick a number, but it's not basically necessarily anything. And another option is to adopt the new CDC guidelines, which, as we discussed, have really good metrics. They, they get at the hospital stress, which I think is very, very important. And they do allow for flexibility going downward. If you're in low, you're obviously mask optional, medium, mask optional. Their guidelines say if you're in high, then you go to mask required again. So there's an on-ramp and an off-ramp, which I think is good. So if the district does adopt the new CDC guidelines, we'll have to update our documents. Some families will need time to explore 100% virtual option. Some families, especially those with younger children, will need time to, to prepare the children for the impact of what that looks like and feels like. And some staff members will need time to process what this means for their family.
You have the ability to vote tonight. Ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's quiet down so we can complete the presentation and the board will then have discussions. We will have the opportunity for public comments.
So in conclusion, districts usually stay linked to some government health agency, be it the CDC or Office of Public Health, they're medical experts. The CDC guidelines appear to be reasonable and well-thought-out. Again, their, their website is full of rationale, and it moves the construct from pandemic to endemic. There's a public board meeting Monday when the vote on the possible revisions to the health and safety plan. And this is good news. I think this gets lost in the shuffle a little bit. There is light at the end of the masking tunnel, and with an opportunity to model, model for people both compromise and compassion. And there's an opportunity here. This is good news.
All right, thank you for that presentation, Jim. All right, now we will go ahead and we'll move into board comments. Who would like to start? Does anyone have any comments or questions for Jim?
Guys, I have a lot of comments, but you're not making it very easy for us. I've lost my... Guys, I came here today to be...
I have a question, too. I have a question.
This is not how we do these meetings. This is so disruptive. Let's take a break. Let's take a ten-minute break, and we will come back.
Okay, recess.
Amy? Amy? Amy?
We're now recording in live again. Thank you, Katie. All right, the board has now returned from recess. I'll remind the community, we'll be having an opportunity for public comment, at which time we will get an opportunity to speak. If we do have another outburst, we will need to clear the room now and proceed virtually at that point. So please wait till your opportunity to speak at public comment. All right, so we will return to board comments. Zepi, did you want to continue speaking?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm really struggling with the outlash in the community, because I've only been very positive throughout this whole entire experience. In fact, today, I came to ask for us to reconsider a few things, because I do think in light of the CDC, we should take that as something very strongly that we can act on sooner than later. And I don't know how others feel about that, but I do think we're moving in a direction where our case counts have gone down, our vaccination rates have gone up, our hospitalization rates have gone down. And I feel like we're in a place where we can go mask optional, and people have both the option of being without their mask, and those who aren't vaccinated or have a lot of other reasons for being masked can have their mask on. So I was in that camp, and I am in that camp, not was, am in that camp. And that's what I would like to talk more about, because I would like to hear how others feel about it.
Thank you, Zepi. Anyone else on the board like to comment? Joe?
I was just going to say, I think Deanne maybe had a comment first.
Oh, you can go, Joe, fine, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, for me, the, you know, I took a closer look at the CDC guidelines, and the adjustments that they made to their masking guidance, the criteria that they're using or proposing, they all seem reasonable and make sense to me, and seem like a good adjustment, given where we currently are, about two years into the pandemic. So, yeah, I, I think the CDC guidelines make sense, and I'm, I am in support of shifting our approach to match theirs.
Thank you, Joe. Deanne?
Yeah, thanks, Amy. I am in agreement. I think I've been a champion for following expert guidelines from the beginning. We didn't like them before, we like them now, good. Um, the only issues, I think, that the questions that some people had that I wanted to have addressed is that, you know, what would be the specific protocols? I assume we'd have to still wear a mask when someone is visibly sick, and wear a mask when we are post-isolation, you know, coming back to school after that five-day isolation after you are COVID-positive, and then wear a mask if you're a close contact. And I wanted to know, and Jim, maybe you can answer this, what a close contact would be given max, max optional in a classroom, and how kids move around, and is there still distancing? Can you address some of those concerns for people, please?
Certainly. The, the CDC guidelines, as we discussed, have, have some updated ideas about the transmission level in the community, and then what that does about masking broadly. And I agree that I think they're, they're excellent adjustments. What the CDC doesn't get into is the details of such things as isolating, quarantining, close contacts, that kind of thing. That would be shared with us from the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. It is in their jurisdiction to, to issue things related to quarantine, mask to stay is an example of something that might still be in place. I do not have information from the Office of Public Health on those levels of details. I think we could move forward at the moment with broadly speaking mask optional, if, as long as we're medium or low. And then fill those blanks in hopefully the next couple of days. We have a meeting with Office of Public Health tomorrow, countywide, and these questions, the very ones you asked, will be asked of them. I don't know the answers to those. I do, I can say that, on the, the one with visibly sick, if somebody's visibly sick, they need to just go home. And that's, that one is, the tricky part is the isolating, quarantining rule, and masks to stay provision, those kinds of things. I don't know the answer to those.
But the, the CDC does, does require when coming back to school post-isolation, like you get the five-day isolation, and then it's their guidance that says, wear a mask for five more days when coming into contact with the public, correct? So I, I guess I assume that if we would adopt CDC guidelines, we'd also adopt that particular part of it, like all of it, right?
Well, when it comes to things like quarantine, it's likely that the Office of Public Health will adopt those very things that CDC did. But they have to adopt them. On, on the isolating quarantine front, it's their level of detail, including masks to stay, which is why we had that hangup with that to begin with. I would envision they, they eventually, whenever they get around to doing, formalizing it, adopting what CDC says on those matters as well. But I can't speak for them for sure.
Amy? Go ahead, Rosetta.
Thanks. I just wanted to say that I actually am also in support of making changes to the, to the current situation. However, I do want to make clear that any mask bullying needs to be handled, and that there, we need to be, have clear guidelines for those people who want to wear masks, that the kids will not be bullied. I think the kids have been through enough these past couple of years, and I think bullying would be one thing that would be detrimental.
Any other comments? David?
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, nothing's really changed in the last week. The, the CDC changed the metrics on how we're measuring levels. Changes for the better, I'm sure, they're the experts. However, if, if we're going to change the health and safety plan... However, if we're going to change the health and safety plan, there was some things that I would like to see included in that change would be a provision to provide, to allow teachers and parents to give plenty of counseling regarding respecting choices to wear or not wear a mask and minimize inevitable peer pressure, as Rosetta mentioned. I think we should ensure that there's a supply of K-95 masks for those who need them and may not have them at school. Based on our survey, there's going to be a majority of the students and families who are not in favor of changing. They're not expecting a vote and there needs to be a buffer of time to allow them to speak their piece and to allow adjustments as needed. In some cases, students will have to, to make, I think Jim mentioned in his presentation that some families may choose to look for virtual options. So we'll need to allow time for that, I think. And then finally, I think we need to continue with the other aspects of the health and safety plan. Mitigation, contact tracing, quarantining and so forth that are already in place. We make changes and when we vote on that next week, those were things I'd like to see included.
Thanks, David. And Jim, as far as the masks are concerned, you did mention something before, we do have some K-95 masks in, in stock already for the district, correct?
We have very, very, very few, but yes. And I talked to our director of facilities, Jerry, today and asked him how quickly we could get more.
Great, thank you.
All right, and just one follow up question. If someone wanted to go virtual in the event that, you know, they didn't feel comfortable with this change, how quickly can they move to virtual?
That's a good question. It would depend somewhat on the grade level. Our virtual option is the WISIC and Virtual Academy. And the curriculum, for the most part, is aligned, if not necessarily on the pacing. So we'd have to make sure that where the student is in their current class and the various subjects. Pacing wise is the same as the Virtual Academy's pace or vice versa. And, and we can enroll students, we have the ability to enroll mid semester. It's just a matter of making sure they're in the right place.
In K through five?
Same.
Same.
It's even trickier there though because they have, where they are in the curriculum is not quite as, as standard, but we can do it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do have.
Oh, go ahead, Tom.
I have just a couple of questions. Jim, given the possibility of going mask optional, I know the district has been working hard in other ways to try to have mitigation efforts in place with masks. Are there, is there anything additional that we could do potentially to help safeguard those coming back in school with, with optional masks or without masks?
I like the idea of offering a mask to those who want it, a high quality mask. I, in, the trick is, in our effort to get back to normal as much as we can, doing other things, like I'll just throw one out, distancing, let's just say. What we're, we talked about today is the music class at elementary school. We want to reintroduce everywhere in those classes singing, not just those classrooms that have enough space. So we would do that. If we went to masking optional, it would be, this is an example. Singing would be allowed in all of the classes, no matter what the distancing is. And that would almost go in the opposite direction we were talking about, but if we don't do that, then the impact of mask optional is, you know, is undercut a little bit. We're trying to get back to normal as much as we can.
So are there other distancing? Is there anything else that we might be able to do that we know has been working for us historically?
Mr. Badger, I think we're going to continue to circulate error as much as possible and I think we're going to continue to do the custodial protocols that we have been doing. I think when the change occurs, we're not going to relax those types of things, but I think we're going to continue with them, at least through the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you, Wes. And just one other question. In terms of our protocols for when students come back, will they continue to be consistent with the OPH, Montgomery County OPH, or are we going to differ from that? Do the recommendations differ?
Well, we, if we went to CDC, it would be, I would say, I'd be more comfortable saying there would be consistent with CDC. It's very likely though, Paul, that the Montgomery County Office of Public Health will adopt most, if not all, of the new CDC regulations. I just don't know when. So I would say it's more accurate to say they'd be consistent with what CDC is recommending.
Okay, thanks, Jim. My last comment, I just feel as though we have been very consistent since the beginning of the pandemic, following closely the Montgomery County OPH guidelines. I did see the announcement today. We all are aware that they are planning to change, although we don't know when. But consistency is important. I think it's important for all of our families to know they can rely on us to do what's in the best interest of as many students as possible. Those who may have disabilities, maybe compromised immunity, immune systems, family members who are high risk, children who are under the age of five who are unvaccinated and unable to get vaccinated. So I do believe it's important for us to be as consistent as possible. And if the OPH guidelines are updated within the next couple of days, I think would be important to adhere to those as opposed to switching to the CDC at this point. That's my last comment. Thank you.
Paul. Marshall, you had comments?
Yeah, I think it's clear after two years that there are certainly passionate people on each side of how they come down on the issue of masks. And I think it's important to note a couple of things. Over the past two years, when we were originally under quarantine, we made an effort to bring our kids back. We then made an effort to bring them all back. And each time, we asked everybody to help us out a little bit, compromise a little bit, let's get to it, let's get everybody back as best we can. And over the year, we then did other things to relax things to hopefully help everybody. We held a prom, we had graduation. We then relaxed our guidelines relating to sports. We relaxed our guidelines relating to our arts programs. All in a measure to try and get back to some sense of normalcy while also maintaining the guidelines that we could. And I remember when we went back two years ago, we went back to school, one of the questions I had to Dr. Chrisfield was, will we be able to do these things when we initially went back unequivocally by the guidelines? And the answer was, no, we'll do our best. And I think we tried to do our best. Not everybody's happy, we know that. Not everybody's going to be satisfied, we know that. But each and every turn, I think we tried to do the most for the benefit of our children. And we don't always get it right. We can't. But we tried our best. And I think in that vein, the goal is to do what's best for all of our kids. And I think that's why the CDC came out and changed their guidelines. We have followed the CDC guidelines for a lot of this. We have followed the Office of Public Health for a lot of this. We invited the Office of Public Health to come tonight. They didn't come tonight. And to me, that said several things. One, they weren't ready to make a change, or they couldn't make a change, or they don't know what they're going to be doing yet. Number two, we don't know the timing of that change. And number three, they're leaving it to us. I think that's what we have to understand. It's up to the districts to make the determination of what we feel is best. For me, going back and forth, I always try to add reason to it. I always try to do some research, talk to people, which I did. And the last thing that I really saw that determined it for me was last week when I got my copy of Trojan Talk. And if you scroll to the end of it, you saw some pictures of the gym at a basketball game. And everybody in the gym was packed together and I saw almost no masks. And what that said to me was three things. Number one, there's a lot of fatigue to this. We all want to get back to normal. Number two, kids and parents, they're starting to make that decision on their own. And number three, I haven't heard of an uptick in cases as a result of that event or any other public event. With that being said, we've done our best. We can't make everybody satisfied with 5,000 students and their families. But we do our best to make sure we can do the most for everybody we can. Tonight, my thought was, in line with the CDC guidelines, in line with generally other districts in the area, I believe that we should move to a mask optional system within the district. I know everybody would love to say, let's vote and let's get it done. However, we also know procedurally, there is a process we have to follow. And normally, we would have to vote on this at a voting meeting, which would be next Monday night. I don't think we should wait. So we still have to follow a policy. And unfortunately, everybody's going to be here longer because of that. What I would like to propose, because two things would have to happen tonight. Number one, we would have to have a motion to change the procedure, essentially saying that this is an emergency measure, narrowly tailored, and see if there's enough board support to enact an emergency measure so that we can debate the issue. Assuming that passes, I would move that we amend the health and safety plan in line with CDC in order to go mask optional. Now, it's late in the night. We know we have to let teachers and parents know and to whatever extent they have to get ready for it. I would say, in a compromised fashion, to make sure everybody understands that we're, that we would be doing this if we voted that way, to make it effective as of Wednesday, so that everybody can get notice out to the teachers and the parents over the next, over tonight or tomorrow, so that Wednesday morning, everybody understands that this narrowly tailored vote, if we vote that way, is simply to make masking optional because we are in that yellow band that permits it under the CDC guidelines. Now with that, I'm also asking that everybody continue to be part of the community. Because as we also know, the CDC guidelines say that if it changes to red, you gotta go back. And I don't think anybody is gonna want to go back. So my hope is that if we vote on this, that we take extra care to ensure that, I know it came up, if kids get sick, keep your kids home. Don't send them in because you don't want to have to go backwards and explain to your kids, it's gotta go back on. We are in this together. Everything we've done along the way to open things up, we've done successfully. This is another piece of the pie. Let's get it done. I so move that we enact an emergency measure to vote to allow the issue of mending the health and safety.
I second.
Let me clarify that motion, if I may. It's a motion to amend the agenda to permit the board to discuss amending the health and safety plan this evening to go mask optional effective Wednesday. And the rationale for this is that because of the CDC action on Friday and other emergent reasons to change the current health and safety plan, that the district, consistent with the Sunshine Act, is planning to do that this evening. And don't ask me to repeat that.
I will simply say what he said.
And we need a second to that effect.
I second. Thank you, Zephy. All right, we've had the motion made, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? And this is just the motion to have the emergent matter heard this evening.
Okay, Amy?
Yeah, Stan?
Yeah, about the motion, you know, I, I agree in light of the recommendation changes that, and in light of, you know, the masking fatigue in the community. Although I do agree with delaying it a day, I think that's a nice compromise because I think there's a lot of kids who are already in bed right now. My kids are going to bed and they don't know, they're not going to know until the morning that, you know, what's going on. Now, I've already talked to my kids about not, about, you know, just being accepting of anyone's choice and that if you're wearing a mask, if you're not wearing a mask, that's okay. Everyone's doing their best. And I encourage every parent to have that conversation with their child, no matter the age. But, you know, I'm disappointed, I guess, in one way that the CDC did this before kids under five had the opportunity to be vaccinated because I know those parents are still dealing with a lot. And I just want to acknowledge that. But nothing's going to change between now and next week with regard to that. So in that regard, that doesn't change the way that, when we would vote, I don't think. I think tonight is fine. Thank you. Oh, but I did actually have other questions about the plan. Am I allowed to go back there or is that later?
That's later, I think. All we're voting on right now is whether we're going to have an agenda item right now.
Thanks, Jeff.
Are there any other comments on the specific motion? Joe?
Yeah, I stated earlier that I'm in support of the CDC guidelines and us as a district shifting our health and safety plan towards that. My initial reaction to taking a vote tonight is, it doesn't, that, I'm not, I'm not leaning or inclined to support that motion primarily because although there are a lot of people in this room clearly, and I think a lot of us on the board who are in support of changing the plan, it is, it wasn't previously announced that we were going to take action tonight. And there is a possibility that when word gets out that the plan's going to change, that there's some other folks who might have some counter arguments that they would like to come forward with, as well as to let, to let us as a board be aware. So our scheduled plan was to discuss, discuss potential change tonight and then formally vote and take action on next Monday. And that's what I still think we should do. But, I mean, again, I use the majority of my fellow board members.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else on the board with any comments related to the specific motion? Ronnie?
I'd like us to get going on it and not postpone it, Joe.
Thank you.
And if I may, Amy?
Yeah, please, Marko.
In addition to the survey we sent out, which, which hopefully actually causes some anxiety to lessen because if you looked at the numbers, the one that I think is important, if people have a concern, the vast majority of our students and staff are vaccinated. And if they have that concern, hopefully that eases that concern, number one. Number two, in light of the CDC's guidance, we've all been talking to people, we've all received emails on both sides of it. I think people have had certainly an opportunity to let us know how we feel, how they feel about the issue. I think we have a good idea of how, how they feel. And the sooner we get to vote on this issue, if people want to make a change, I believe it's actually better because if we say we're instituting something, say Wednesday, and we give them an opportunity to say, you, you have some time to make your decision, instead of postponing it till next Monday and then maybe giving them more time after that, let's get the ball in motion, let's get this done.
Thank you, Marshall. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I agree. Like, if people were that concerned, we wouldn't have had 50% response rate to our survey. Like, people are like at whatever point, so let's just see if we're ready to make a motion, like if people are interested in voting today. And let's start the ball rolling.
All right, thank you, Zephy. Are there any other comments before, Deanne?
Amy, yeah, I think a lot of the people that, I don't want to speak for everyone, but people that voted for keeping the health and safety plan were mostly voting for sticking to guidelines. And so I think a lot of people have realized guidelines have changed and so the attitude of some have changed. So. And I also was pleasantly surprised at the vaccination rate. That's very encouraging. So way to go, Wes.
Thanks, Deanne. Anyone else? All right, well, Katie, we're going through a roll call vote, if that's okay.
Mr. Antonio?
No.
Mr. Badger?
No.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Yes.
Ms. Kiyabachi?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
No.
Mrs. Hayman?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion, I guess?
Yes.
Dr. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Ginsberg?
Yes.
Six yes, three no.
All right, the motion passes. We just passed so we can vote on it, guys. So again, we have one more step to go through. All right, so the next motion, Marshall, do you have another motion?
I do, I have another motion. Based on the other motion, I now have a motion to amend the health and safety plan to be in line with the Center for Disease Control recommendation to go mask optional for our students beginning on Wednesday. If there are other issues that have to be dealt with regarding the health and safety plan for the OPH, that can be amended at a regular meeting once those recommendations are made. But this is tailored to the issue at hand, which is making masks optional, not eliminating them, so that if anybody wants to wear them, they are more than welcome to. Be comfortable with whatever you want to be. But let's vote to hopefully make it mask optional as of Wednesday.
I second that.
Question to that motion, that that motion be subject to granting the authority to the superintendent to make any other necessary modifications to the health and safety plan to be consistent with this action, so it could save you another action of amending the plan. But if there's just other language in the plan itself that we haven't looked at this evening, the superintendent should be granted that authority.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. An example of that would be on buses. The CDC also has masking, this recommendation extending to busing. Previously, as we recall, was a federal. Now, so we would make that change without another vote. I do think we're going to need to, on a separate, deal with the details of quarantining and all that that's coming out of Office of Public Health, separate. And we'll do that, we'll revise the health plan, revoke. But I like the idea of being able to do a couple other things, such as also change it for busing.
Thank you, Jim. So, Marshall, is your motion so amended?
Whatever Jeff said, the motion is so amended. And I move to a vote if there is no comment.
So moved. All right, is there any, oh, actually, I guess at this point, because it's a special motion, we do. We did have a second, right? It was down there, Zaki seconded it. Yeah. All right, so because this is a special motion, we have to have a public comment at this point. So what we'll do is normally, we allow five comments on any particular topic. What we'll do is we'll allow 30 minutes of public comment. So extend it a bit. And then at that point in time, we'll have board comment. And then we will go ahead and proceed with the vote. So I have here, I'm just going to go in order, and we'll go back and forth between the audience, and then we'll go to Zoom. So first person we have live is Michelle Chess. When you come up to the podium, please state your name, your municipality, your residence, and say the topic, but we know the topic.
My name is Michelle Chess. I live in Whitpain Township, and I have three kids in the district. I really didn't have anything planned to say today. I really wanted to come in and just kind of see how everyone felt. My comment is, it's been two years. We've been waiting two years to align with the two bodies of science that everyone has been blindly telling us they were following. As the other districts that have changed in the past few days, they're sending out detailed informational emails to their whole community and making prudent decisions based on those scientific bodies. Why aren't we doing that? It sounds like we have a move in our direction. And I appreciate that more than you care to understand. But basically, that's all it is. Our kids have been waiting for two years. In the past, we keep talking about two weeks. In the past two weeks, we've had like less than 10 cases in school. That's like 0.02 of 1%, 0.2% of 1% of our population. The risk is so minimal. Our kids have suffered so much. My kindergartner has not seen her teacher's face since before pre-K. She has no delays. She's been in reading support, she's been in summer school. There's no need for it. At this point, it's time. We've all been patient, some of us less than others. I mean, I'm very frustrated. You all have gotten emails from me, so you all know my name, I'm sure. And it's just, it's time. I don't see a reason to continue this, especially when the vast majority of other schools have pivoted in a timely fashion and made the necessary changes. As for kids needing a time to change, Wednesday sounds great. They can talk to their kids tomorrow. Provide K and V fives for the kids that want them. I think those are great ideas. But for the rest of the kids, let them get back to normal. The risk is so miniscule. Who knows what this virus is going to do? If it's going to go back up, and we're going to lose that chance again. Act now. Do it when you can and make it change as of Wednesday. Please, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Michelle. Katie, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to comment?
Yes, we have T. Heinz.
Okay, T. Heinz, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I did not plan to speak at all, actually. But when I first logged on to the meeting, I have to say that, you know, I'm a firm believer as being a health professional, a medical professional, that I, you know, am a believer of like the CDC guidelines, all of the governing bodies as such. But what concerns me more than anything is just, you know, we're all entitled to opinions. We all, you know, I've seen the burnout and everything. And I also know what it's like on the other side. I do pay attention to the numbers. But my concern, again, is just the behavior of the community. I'm just, you know, I understand that, you know, parents are just outraged. I understand the burnout. I get it. Like, I work in healthcare. So many medical providers are burnt out from this. Doesn't negate, you know, our responsibility. But our responsibility as parents and community members are to act as role models. And I'm a firm believer in standing up for what you believe in. But it's not what you do, it's how you do it. And these kids are watching our every move. So I just wanted to come on here and just beg the community to just please, like, if we're getting, trying to get back to some normalcy, a part of being normal is loving one another and being respectful towards one another. I don't care what your position is. And it's just a disgrace because the kids are doing and emulating what they see, even on social media. It's disgusting. And I don't even make comments on there. I didn't even plan to comment tonight. But guys, in order for us to like keep moving forward and to return to normal, let's show these kids love, respect, and appreciation for just human life. Like, it gives nobody the right, regardless of your position, to speak to anyone in any negative light. So my hope and prayer is that we all can get back to normalcy in that way and proceed to move forward. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much for those comments.
Okay, our next in-person speaker will be Tara Greif. Tara, you can come on up.
Thank you, Tara Greif. I'm at 360 Forest Avenue in Ambler Borough. Well, what I was going to, what I have written here was just asking you, what you've already done, is to vote this evening. It's been two long years, as everyone has already said. As you know, from my numerous emails, I've been asking for mask choice in Wissahicken School District for many months. And I'm happy to hear that hopefully this is coming on Wednesday for these kids. There's just no need to continue forcing masking on everyone. It should be a choice. And I think that kids do respect other kids' choices to mask or not mask. I mean, you see it out in public. Some people are masked, some people aren't masked. You know, at the games, some are masked, some aren't masked. So I don't think that's going to be the, I don't think mask bullying is really going to be a huge issue because kids are already used to seeing some of their friends masked and some not. I'm glad that, you know, my family will finally have a choice, hopefully starting Wednesday. And I appreciate you listening to the community this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tara. Katie, who do we have next on Zoom?
We have Dana Vandergrift.
All right, Dana, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, how are you? My name's Dana Vandergrift. I live in Whitpain. I have three kids in the district. A couple people had already kind of touched on what I wanted to say. And one of them, because mask bullying kind of came up a few times in the comments. And I just wanted to say that, like, I feel like the kids in general are just kind of conducting themselves better than some of the adults. The kids that are opting to wear masks at different sporting events and where masks are optional, aren't even, like, nobody cares. Like, none of the other kids care. There's no comments about it, there's nothing. You know, when I talk to my kids about it, and hopefully they will be able to go optional on Wednesday, if they feel like they want to wear a mask, that's fine. And I fully support their decision. And I feel like the other kids in this district will support their decision. And I also wanted to comment that I think, in general, the kids do model their adults' behavior. And, you know, just to be mindful of that moving forward, just kind of as a community. And I totally agree with some of the other comments that were made. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dana. All right, our next in-person speaker will be Christine DeFrancesco. You can come on up.
Hi, everyone, I'm Christina DeFrancesco. Let me first start by talking about mask bullying, since that came up. That actually can go both ways. So let's not bring our personal feelings about this out, saying that it would go one way versus another. We're already seeing that in other school districts. With that being said, I will say the CDC has said, and I read and I listened to the media briefing on Friday, that effective mask wearing protects people, even if you are around people that are not masking. So let's move past that, please. So I'm going to get to the bigger issue here, besides just masking, our mitigation efforts that we continue to force on our children. I will tell you that the most disturbing thing I heard this entire two years was not when I was working with COVID patients, holding their hands as they died in the beginning with no good medications, no vaccines. It came when I sat next to my son. And during his class, a student wearing Microsoft Office accounted horrific abuse situation through Microsoft Office. She had nobody near her. The teacher I reached out to couldn't get a hold of a counselor. But we stood there, trying to support this kid from home. Our bigger issue here is the mental health of our children. It is beyond masking. It is these mitigations that when my child sings, she gets in trouble. She is a kindergartner. The damage that is occurring to our youth, we are going to see the impact for years to come. So it sounds like we'll already, hopefully, vote to go with the CDC recommendations. I will say Bucks County has successfully followed a flu module. And their rates of COVID have been the same as ours. With that being said, I encourage you all to look beyond just mitigation efforts of masking, but everything. Our children need normalcy for their mental health. Suicide rate, third leading and second leading clause in ages 10 to 18. COVID nowhere to be seen. So I encourage you all. So let's get back to putting our kids first and normalcy in our schools. This is a safe haven that should be more than just education. And it should be development and well-being of our children. We need to look at our achievement gap that's worsening, our insecurities with food that this has caused. And again, their mental well-being. I encourage you guys to look at the SFR funds and how they use them better and get input from our teachers and us. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Katie, who's our next speaker on Zoom?
There are no more hands raised on Zoom at this time.
Okay, well, then we'll go to our next in-person comment, which will be from Jamie Erkel. You can come on up, Jamie.
Hi, I'm Jamie. I'm from Whitpain Township. I have four kids in the district, one currently still at Wissahicken because I moved the three younger ones out this year. Thank you, Marshall, I want to say, for leading the way in this. I think for the people that don't have young kids that have personally been affected or have a side effect from masking, it's hard to relate to like us here being so passionate. But we're passionate because we're seeing our kids suffer. You know, parents are reporting migraines, they're reporting depression, they're reporting anxiety before they go to school. My kids have personally had really bad headaches. They don't drink enough during the day because they're not given mask breaks at school, which is something that I had asked for in the very beginning, that there would be mandatory mask breaks. But regardless, I think when you start to hear the parents' stories about how it's affecting their kids, like, you become emotionally involved. So we're emotional because of that, because our kids are being affected. I do ask that you end this as quickly as possible because I know it seems like, oh, what's another week or two weeks? But to the parents, but every morning, we're watching our kids' faces and seeing them like stressed out about it. It's really emotional to us. And every day feels like a year. Like, it just feels like it's been so long. I think we can look not only to Bucks County, but also Satterton School District, who it's been approximately a month that they've been mask optional. I don't know if anyone's reached out to the, like, leaders there or somebody administrative staff there, but I have. And there has been a, 35% of the kids are still wearing masks every day. They don't have issues with bullying. I think the kids are actually, like, a couple of speakers have mentioned, better than us because they see each other every day. In our community, we've all been so disconnected from each other. Like, I'm meeting some people in this room that I've seen on Facebook. And we're arguing with each other there. But then when we see each other, it's like a sense of community. So I think our kids already have that because they've been in class together, seeing each other every day. I don't think bullying will be an issue. I'm sure every parent will be on top of it if it is, regardless of how you feel about it. And again, it's just Satterton, we're going back to them. 35% are still wearing masks, and they haven't had any uptick in cases. This has actually decreased. So I think that's something that I want everyone to really strongly think about, is we have real-life data now. Thank you.
Your first one on Zoom, Katie?
Not right now.
Okay, then we'll move on to our next in-person speaker, which is Kristin Stanton. You can come on up, Kristin.
Hello, I'm Kristin. I'm from Whitpain. First, I just wanted to say thank you all for the time you put into the community, especially tonight with like tensions high. I understand, and I could like feel how awkward that is. So I really appreciate you. You're taking time away from your family, so thank you. So the role of a school board is to enhance education. In the past two years, the challenge for all of you is that the decisions have been publicly judged and based on metrics not directly tied to education. If I feel for you in that. In the last two months, even with 100% mask adherence, our school community saw massive spike in cases. This is our data that is tangible and visible within our community. The masks may not have been as protective of as advertised. Students wore them in classes, on buses, and even on the playground as directed by health agencies, but still cases climbed in our schools. Thankfully, the CDC and Department of Health are dropping the mandates. My assumption is we will act in accordance with this, as we have in the last two years. I know that some of you are hoping and planning to reenact the mandate when the numbers inevitably rise again because the Department of Health and the CDC will recommend it. However, I am preemptively pleading with you to make the decision in the best interest of our children's education through the lens of experienced data. That experienced data is clearly evident in the fact that we have had more cases in December and January than any other period of the whole pandemic. The negative consequences of masking are now tangible, from the child who now sees the mask as part of his identity to the constant distraction that adjusting and policing masks presents in the classroom. If we are faced with a situation in the future, I am pleading for mask optional. Armed with personal experience, we can make these decisions for ourselves and our children. We also have neighboring districts who have been mask optional for months. And surprisingly, in some cases, the cases of And surprisingly, in some cases, the cases have actually gone down. Kids continue to wear them, and up to 42% do when it's optional, so that bullying option is hopefully not there. Two years later, after this pandemic, we are wiser, we are stronger, and we are still one whiz. We used to respect each other and our lived experiences. My hope is that we remember that in the future, and remember that mask optional is actually the only real choice. Education and our own data should be at the forefront of your discernment, not edicts from health institutions. We are a community, and the decision is ours. Thank you.
Next, was there anybody on Zoom still not? Okay, then we will move on to our next in-person speaker, which is Punit Koshuk. I'm hoping I said that correctly. I'm sorry.
So Punit Koshuk, Blue Bell. In an ideal situation, we're at any hope that the school board members would actually listen to us, the parents, I would make a case based on facts and science. I did that the last time. Nothing happened. Here's a fact. Sweden, schools were open for all two years. No kids died, no teachers died, nothing happened. People lived happily after after. That never went into your consideration. Over the last few months, I've thought about this. What is the issue? We know the issue's not science. The issue is power. Think about why these people punished your kids for the last two years. At their very core, these are scared people. That is the most animating impulse that drives their decision-making. They're scared of life, risk. They're scared of failure. They're scared of pain, happiness. They are cowards. And cowards, by their very nature, are bullies. And these are the people we want in charge of our kids' futures? These people, they make decisions willy-nilly without consideration from the community of parents? Maybe one day, maybe today, they will lift the mask mandate. Do not thank them. Do not thank them. Remember, the vote to enforce the mask mandate was a 9-0. Not a 8-1, not a 5-4, not a 6-3. It was a 9-0. You don't thank someone who took their boot off your neck after two years of subjugation. You don't do that. Keep in mind, if not stopped, they will do it again and again and again. So channel that seething anger that you have felt for two years. Do not let anyone tell you to be kind and compassionate and societal norms. Societal norms be damned when it comes to my kids. Keep in mind, the fight is not over. The next fight is against the poisoning of our children's minds through critical race theory. Or as these people call it, culturally responsive training. We're not stupid. Let's change the name. People won't know it. We do. So keep in mind, the last two years, the anger that you feel, the fight is still on. Be engaged in the fight. I will be here. Fight with me.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Kara Finn.
Okay, Kara, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm another person who wasn't planning on commenting, but in light of some recent comments, I did want to offer a counterpoint of thank you for all of the amazingly hard work you all have done to keep our kids safe and in school. I am looking forward to continuing to follow the recommendations of the CDC and the Montgomery County Public Health, once they update theirs. I look forward to hearing on next Monday night how the school will address other questions that were raised, such as what to do when there is a positive case in the classroom, is that close contact, and so forth. So this is just me representing other part of the community, I suppose, that does want to thank you. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Kara. All right, we'll get our next in-person speaker, Colleen Sempero. Okay, I made this letter, Sempero.
I'm not speaking about masking. I'm speaking about the reputation in the high school today.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry, got mixed in with the other one. We'll be having a separate public comment period shortly. Okay. All right, sorry about that. All right, our next masking one is Joe Murphy.
Well, here we are, right? I mean, look, everybody said everything I have to say. Many of you guys have seen me on social media, Jim, you see my emails. You know, I'm coaching this town. I see a lot of these kids. I see the anxiety. When I coach basketball, and I have a kid that will not take the mask off as he's playing basketball, run up and down the court, you know, for fear. A lot of these parents are afraid, and that has value. You know, a lot of people have been afraid. I don't think all the information that everybody's got throughout the course of these two years has been 100% true on both sides. And I think everybody's just kind of doing the best they can. But in light of the CDC, I don't believe their information is 100% accurate at all times either, but that's what we followed. That's what we've been told to follow, and that's what we, you know, that's the right and wrong, I guess you could say, when it comes to masking, when it comes to Corona and, you know, things I've had to endure at work. But it's time. You know, all our neighboring districts are going mask optional, and, you know, it's not gonna, not gonna make everybody happy, but it's gonna make a lot of kids happy. And, you know, I hear a lot of things about giving kids time to get adjusted and giving kids the, or giving parents the time to talk to their kids about not wearing a mask. For two years, I've been fighting this mask thing, and for two years, I've been told that kids are resilient. Kids are resilient, and they'll deal with it. And the fear will go away from some of these kids, and I wish, I hope, that the district takes priority in talking to some of these kids that are afraid to take the mask off, because they don't need it. That's a fact. You guys know. Okay, science knows that. These kids aren't susceptible to dying. You know, there's immunocompromised kids, and people die. I mean, it's messed up, but the kids that are afraid to take a mask off, they're the biggest victims in this thing. You know, and anxiety, the depression that's going to follow, man, we're going to see for years, as somebody else has said. So, you know, I just hope everybody does the right thing and take these things off our kids, and let's get back to some sense of normalcy, because although we're not perfect, we're loud, we're obnoxious at times, we're parents, and we don't have any other choices. Thank you.
Yes, Carrie Ferrera. Okay, Carrie, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, I wasn't planning on speaking today either, but I do want to thank you for everything and all the consideration you've given to everything you've, in all of your planning you've had since the start of COVID and all of the angry emails I'm sure you've gotten. But first of all, a quick note in response to the last comment. Some kids are immunosuppressed. A lot of kids are immunosuppressed. So it's not the place of teachers to talk to the kids about taking the masks off, and I hope that doesn't happen. For those who are immunocompromised, if there are any teachers or any of that, I'm not sure if the two days is enough to make any adjustments if they're needed, to go virtual or otherwise, make different work plans, if any of the teachers now need to take time off. So just the consideration of whether Wednesday, it can happen in that time. Other than that, you know, I've been, I'm good with following science. Following the science is good. But as said before, if we follow the science that masks are optional when the numbers go down, we need to make sure we follow the science that, if they say masks, go back on if our numbers go up. And, yes, thanks.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker will be Sandra Holden, or Holder. Here? No? Okay. Um, Dawn Holder. All right, Maureen Bogut.
Hi, guys. I don't think I can probably add much. My name's Maureen Bogut. Sorry, Whitpain. More to what everybody said. We're passionate. People are upset. We have been polite for two years. I have been polite. I've tried to be polite. My children have suffered greatly. Greatly. I know, I sent my kids in last year when we had the option to. It was one of the few. It was sort of a sad situation. We had, like, three kids in the class. But we had to take what we could get. I'm getting off topic, but this has been obviously very stressful for everybody. It hits home, so people are going to get angry. And now that we're seeing normalcy coming around us, we have to go to that. Our children are worth it. I mean, our children are not, thankfully, getting sick. I mean, they're not. This isn't smallpox or that took children. That was horrible. This is a very different scenario. And we're in a different place two years now. I think urgency is there. The parents feel it from the kids. Our kids aren't wearing the masks. Do you know that? They're going to walk around like I am, with it down here for the show, because they're afraid. They're afraid they're going to get yelled at, they get chased down. Mask bullying absolutely goes the opposite way from what you're saying, I have to say. Are you a anti-masker? Are you an anti-vaxer? I mean, people come up to children who are, who, this is maybe a year ago. People are more lax now, but it's pretty ugly. So there's a lot of judgment going on in the other direction as well. So if we seem anxious and upset, this is the first time this has happened. You know that. Now, obviously, very few people actually have come to the meeting in person. You've gotten to know me in my face. I've been polite. I've tried to make clear points. But this is because people have had it, and they're at the end, and they, every family should be able to make their own choice about risk benefit. Risk, life is risk. It's not safe. Life isn't safe. You know, you don't know if you have tomorrow. Your kids are suffering. You need to live your life as you feel need fit. There's a part of song that says that. But it's the truth. Our children need to be able to live their lives without fear. There's so much fear out there. It's destroying our children. Anxiety is unbelievable. I had to talk my one daughter off a ledge two months ago. Not literally, but she was really suffering. And even though we're almost towards normal, it's not normal, and they couldn't see the end of the tunnel. They couldn't see it. Normal, normal, normal. That's what we need. Kids aren't getting sick. Thank you.
To the end of the 30-minute comment period, so any additional comments that we have, we will reserve those, and we will be having another comment period. So you can feel free to comment at that point in time. All right, so now I'll open it up to board comments. Do any of my fellow board members have any comments before we proceed with a vote?
Hey, Amy.
Yes, Deanna?
Hi, I just had a couple of, I'm sorry, I'm recovering from the comment section. I do want to say one thing about it, though. I have two kids in the district. I have skin in the game. My kids are in school every day, except right now. They wear masks, and they're okay with it. Like, I don't, I'm not a dictator giving rules that I don't follow, right? Like, that's not how school board works. We're not living in normal times. Like, people are getting sick, and I just would be remiss if I didn't mention that. I don't, you can't minimize the impact of this virus on our community. People have lost loved ones, parents, grandparents. Like, I'm fine with following CDC guidelines, but, like, you're making it sound like we're reacting. I'm going to stop, but the last thing I want to say is, my primary job is stay-at-home mom. If I was interested in power, that wouldn't be my primary job. So I just want to point that out. Okay, my question for Jim. Will distancing still be intact? And are parent volunteers allowed back in the classroom? Those are my questions. Thank you.
The distancing will not be intact, and parent volunteers will, yes, they will be back.
Thank you. Any other board comments or questions at this time? Yes, David, go ahead.
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, Marshall pointed out to begin with that we've been making compromises the whole way since COVID has forced itself upon us. This, if we vote next week as planned, we would still be compromising. That would be an acceleration of the original plan to change our masking options. So, and that would give other families who will need time to adjust the opportunity to do that. And so for that reason, I would not be in favor of changing anything effective this week. And I think that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, David. Anyone else with any comments on the board?
Just to maybe help things along a little bit, in echoing what a lot of people have said tonight, there is a lot of anxiety among our kids, among our families on both sides. And of course, you know, you can't argue with passion. Being a parent, you always want the best for your kid. We're parents. I understand it. My kids went through the same thing your kids did, and it wasn't easy, and they deal with it differently. And I think that's what makes this job a little harder, because you're not always doing what you think is necessary for your child, but what you can do for the community as a whole. And I'll be the first to tell you, I don't always get it right. What do I know? I'm a volunteer. I have another job and another profession. But Jill and John, who are here, know that we pounded the pavement trying to get elected for this job, simply because we want to try and help. Do we know everything? No. Do we, do we get it right? No, and I'll be the first to tell you that I don't. But when I reviewed the, when I reviewed all of the information that we got, researched, to talk to people, this seemed to be reasonable. And I think that that's what we're trying to do. When we talk about delaying it another week, is that unreasonable? No. But why wait? We talked about maybe giving people some more time, but let's give them time anyway. If we vote to open on Wednesday with mask optional, allow them an opportunity to make a change, if they want to. But at least let's get the ball rolling, because as much as we have an obligation to their physical well-being, we also have an equal obligation to their mental health. I think that in terms of time, the time is now. And whether it's Wednesday or Monday, it doesn't make a big deal, other than I think we should implement it as quickly as possible so we can get everything else rolling, so that we can get back to normal as quickly as possible, and hope that we continue on this path where we can keep our kids in school, try to help them along the way, because they do need it. And I think that voting tonight to try and get it done is in the best interest of our kids. And I think that's why we became school board members, to try and do what's in the best interest of the students of this school district, including the ones who are here tonight.
Thank you, Marshall. Is there anyone else, Joe?
Yeah, my previous no vote was, my preference would have been to vote Monday, as we originally sort of planned. But to me, that issue, that issue's passed. We're voting tonight. And so my vote on the actual change to the health and safety plan is not about the timing of it. It's about the merits of the plan itself. So again, my preference would have been we vote Monday, but since the majority of the board said we vote tonight, we're voting tonight. And my vote about coming up is going to be on the merits of the plan itself, not about And my vote about coming up is going to be on the merits of the plan itself, not about timing. Spoiler alert, I said I was in favor of the CDC recommendations.
Thank you, Joe. All right, any other, Bethany, go ahead.
Oh, I think Ronnie was before me.
Ronnie, go ahead.
I would like us to get the vote done.
Okay. We will, we will. And, you know, we don't move forward by looking at rearview mirrors. So I agree, we should move forward. But Jim, in the event that we vote yes and it passes, and there are questions, concerns, issues from families, should they be calling the administration office, their building principal? How are we going to set them up for success? And second of all, for those children who need counseling, support, guidance, what have you, are counselors going to be equipped to help out starting tomorrow and/or Wednesday of moving forward?
Okay. First, a handful of people in this room have my email address so they know how to get in touch with me. Should they?
We've gotten all the emails.
I think so. The answer regarding parents who have questions about maybe changing, that goes directly to the building principals. We will get on this. We have a day to help them. So we'll get on this tomorrow. And the counselors are always available to help with anything in this need or anything else. And that doesn't, that won't change.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Bethany. And Jim, assuming that we do vote in favor of this, will an email be going out tonight to the community or tomorrow morning to inform them of this change?
It will take a little bit of time. I know time is a sensitive subject, but it'll take a tiny bit of time to craft the message. So I would say as soon as tomorrow morning, possibly do it.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jim. All right, are there any other?
I have two questions.
Paul, go ahead.
Thanks, Amy. The first question is, Jimmy, you had mentioned in your presentation that there were several items that would take time for you to be able to implement a change, a change were to occur. And it sounded like those issues or those items would be more than a day's notice for you to be able to get into effect. Can you talk about that a little bit? If one day is enough time for you to do the things that you noted were necessary?
The three things I think are going to have to be attended to very, very soon are, A, what we talked about, any families who want to switch. And we'll just have to compress that into tomorrow. This will give people 24 hours' notice to speak to their child if they want, if they feel the need to. And the piece about staff members, that might take a little more time, but we have ways around that. If somebody has a real big issue, there's, you know, a substitute is available for that. So I think that one is flexible. It's just about tomorrow, reaching out to families in kind of like an all-hands-on-deck effort to see who wants to change. If they do, there might not be any, I don't know.
So you feel that that's, you feel that's reasonable and realistic for you to be able to implement?
Well, it's no secret that I would have preferred more time, but I understand the need to get back to normal.
Okay. And second question then is regarding the other mitigation efforts. I thought we said earlier, when I asked the question, that these other mitigation that we've been doing would stay in place. But I heard just a minute ago that distancing would not be in place any longer in response to Deanna's question. So we'll also, so we'll be removing masks and also removing distancing?
That's correct. I'll give an example, the previous example of music class. And another example would be lunch. We won't have kids in satellite areas in lunch anymore. I would only put one caveat, and I mentioned this earlier. There are going to be things about quarantining and isolating and contact tracing that are not part of this, that we need information from the Office of Public Health. And I hope I'm being clear on that. That's going to come this week. And on Monday's meeting, when we have a vote on the revised Health and Safety Plan, it will reflect the change we talked about tonight, following CDC for masking and things like busing. I don't have the answer for contact tracing and quarantine. And so there might be more discussion on Monday night about those things. We'll settle, resolve the CDC guidance tonight. But we, there's going to be a few pieces. And in those pieces are some other protocols or mitigation things. I don't think distancing will be part of it, but it could be something like mask to stay. I don't know. I don't want to, but that's kind of like a minor point, but it is an important point.
And what is the rationale for removing the distancing?
Well. The distancing is a measure that is combined with masking so that we don't have close contacts. And so, for example, at lunch, we couldn't get six feet. And so we had to put some students in either the auditorium or maybe in an alternate space. Not ideal at all. And so now that masks aren't going to be in place, the hallways, classrooms, wherever, it doesn't make any sense to distance some places and not everywhere else.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. All right, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I would also like to get more clarification. I thought the motion only affected masking and not the other mitigation effects. It seems to me that making masks optional, according to CDC guidance, is something we could do if we keep the other mitigation efforts in place, including distancing, cleaning, air circulation, all of those things.
We certainly do those, the cleaning and air circulation. The key to the distancing is it's tied to masking in that it's part of the overall strategy, prevent close contact. If we remove the masking, which CDC recommends, and I agree, the CDC rule, new revised guidelines are a good idea. Once we do that, the distancing does itself doesn't really have a whole lot of meaning. It's sort of, it's always been part of a dual mitigation approach. Masking and distancing got us away from close contacts.
Okay, I would beg to differ. Both are sort of, have a cumulative effect. We get a benefit, a little benefit from each of those, but.
Amy, before we vote, I would actually, we had a lot of people talk tonight. The two people that we didn't hear from are our two student board reps, Morgan and Ally. And if they want, I would love to hear their thoughts on the current potential relaxation of the masking guidelines per the CDC.
Um, yeah, I'm Carly. I'm one of the student board representatives. And I was just thinking, no worries. My sister was on the board when she was a student, so not a problem. And I was actually just thinking, it would be a shame if we went through a whole meeting that directly affects students and didn't hear from a single one. And so honestly, I think that the lifting of restrictions in regards to distancing and the effect that that would have on lunches, honestly, that was my biggest priority, even more than the lifting of the mask mandate because the situation with lunches right now as a student. The junior class is, we have to sit in the auditorium for lunch and it just, it just isn't working. It's, I know it sounds like minor complaints, but the, like, the auditorium smells. It's not a fun eating environment. My friend sat on a sandwich the other day in her seat. It's messy. It's, it's just bad. I can't work around that. It's really just not good. And so I think that that should be of the topmost, not the topmost, but of a top priority is getting students back into a normal lunch routine. And then also, just, I know that we're moving away from the argument, which I think is great, but I also just want to comment on that, that as a student, it's, it's just really disappointing. I'm really just disappointed with the division in our community right now. And I just, the way that people are talking to each other, talking to the members of the board on, just on all ends. I think this isn't how my parents have taught me to talk to my teachers. This isn't how any student should be taught to talk to their teachers, to adults. And so I think that just everything, the arguments are going to reflect on the children. I think that students, if we continue to argue, are going to pick up those habits. And so as we move forward, I think it's just, I know people have touched on this, but I don't know how much it seemed to stick, just this idea of being compassionate with one another. I mean, it's so, it's so simple, but it's so important. And just as we move forward, I thought it was important as a student to let you guys know from my perspective, it's just, it's disappointing. And we, the students see that, we recognize that. And we want the same change as you do, just in a very compat, not compassionate and unified manner. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Carly. Alex, did you want to make any comments? Morgan, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to say that one of my biggest priorities is just making sure that if we lift the mask mandate, that all activities will be able to just continue as they, as they are right now. Because I don't really see any issues with, with being able to have after-school activities such as like basketball, club, that, club meetings. I just want to make sure all that can continue and other events like prom and semi-formal, we can still have those. So as long as we're allowed to have our big activities, because I still want to get to enjoy my senior year. So that's my only biggest concern.
All right, is there, are there any other comments?
Can I ask one more thing, Amy?
Of course, Deanna.
Thanks. Is there going to be like a, if, let's just say there is a COVID outbreak in a classroom. This is a big concern among elementary parents, I think, because they share a classroom all day. It's the same kids. If there happens to be an outbreak where there's like a couple of kids that have it, would they go back? Or Jim, maybe this would be addressed in more detail Monday. But I guess in the meantime, what do we do? Would they go back to like a masking just to make sure that it doesn't spread? Or is that still like your option to say, I'm going to wear a mask? Would the parents be informed? Like, do you know how we're going to deal with that?
Yeah, this is, this is an example of what we will need the Office of Public Health on. They, they deal with things like community spread versus classroom spread. They help us when we did have to go mask required in one classroom last year, for example. They're in this mix. So that will be a part of the conversation with them tomorrow.
Okay, thanks. And then for the busing, are we going to wait to vote on that on Monday as well? Like, is this just for in-school masking? I just want a clarification there.
This, I interpret this to be exclusive classes. That's the CDC's.
Include busing, okay. And then when do you think we could get KN95s like a better supply for those who want it? Because if we're doing, you know, protection for yourself, I don't think, you know, the ability to buy high-quality masks should dictate whether one can wear one. So I just wanted to see what that would be like that time.
We'll have it drop shipped and that will be a priority for us. Don't know how many will be needed, but if they're needed, we'll have.
And will there be communication about how you can obtain one through the district if you are in need?
We're very unlikely to get volume until Friday.
Okay, but people will know how to get them, Jim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? No? All right, then Katie, can we have a roll call though?
Yes. Mr. Antonio?
Yes.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Yeah.
Ms. Kiyabaki?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayman?
Yes.
Ms. Carrie Nigus?
Yes.
Dr. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
Yes.
Nine, yes, zero, no.
Thank you so much, and the motion passes. All right, so moving on. All right, now we will move actually onto our first public comment period. Two hours into the meeting. All right, so. If anyone would like to leave, leave. The rest of the meeting will be also very exciting. Would like to stay?
Thank you, Marshall.
All right, I will invite our first public speaker out this evening, Colleen Semerola. Oh, and so for this portion of the public comment, those will be sticking to the normal rules of five comments on a particular topic. Please state your name, municipality of residence, and the subject of which you'll be speaking on this evening. You can draw up the verbiage.
Colleen Semerola, I'm in Amblerboro. I'm speaking about the presentation at the high school today. Today at the high school, the students were given a presentation, at least I didn't see the whole presentation, but at least in part on identity and intersectionality. The students were given this identity wheel on which they could identify or not with various attributes such as able, disabled, age, educational background, employment, ethnicity, gender, identity, nationality, parent, parental status, race, religion, sexual orientation, siblings, family size, and social, socioeconomic status, which is how much money your family has. Then they viewed a video presentation, a portion of which I saw. The video introduced three students, Jerry, a disabled student from a large, low-income family, Fatima, an immigrant from Somalia, who is Muslim, and Greta, a white student from an affluent family. And that's how they were introduced. The point of the video was that Jerry and Fatima were in marginalized groups while Greta was not. The video stated that Greta's parents and grandparents went to college, and she was expected to go to college as well and then get a job when she graduated. Students were told that Greta did not often have to think about her identity while Jerry and Fatima, as members of marginalized groups, don't get to choose whether or not to think about their identity. And that's an actual quote from the presentation. Greta has the freedom to ignore intersectionality. That's another quote. So if you want a visual, there was like a box with Greta in one box and then a box over here with Jerry and Fatima. It just didn't sit well with me. Labeling students based on their physical, ethnic, or racial characteristics or identifiers is insulting and wrong. Teaching them how difficult, how different they are based on these identifiers is wrong. It does not promote understanding, belonging, or a sense of community, implying they are limited because they identify as a member of one of these, and I'm using quotes, marginalized groups, does not help anyone. Intersectionality is an element of critical race theory. We've been told that it is not taught in the schools, but it is. The video even referenced Kimberle Crenshaw, who is one of the founders of CRT and who developed the concept of intersectionality. Teaching this controversial theory is not appropriate for this age group for a reason. Whether it is intentional or not, the result is that many of the students who are not marginalized, quotes, are made to feel guilty while some of the students who are marginalized are made to feel victimized. Who even defines who is marginalized and who is not?
I'm so sorry, but we have hit the frame minute mark. If you'd like, you could certainly email the board further information and follow up with us that way. Okay, thank you so much for your comments. Katie, is there anyone online?
Yes, Kara.
Frederick? Okay, Kara, you can go ahead and unmute your stop and see.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kara Frederick. I live in Whitpain Township. And I am speaking tonight. I'm bringing up the topic of the sports fields at the elementary schools in the district. And the reason that I'm bringing this up is I'm the softball commissioner for Whitpain Recreation Association. And in the past four years, our, our program has grown exponentially. When I came on, yes?
I'm so sorry. The first public commentary is for topics that are on the actual agenda this evening. But we do have a second comment period.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, you're fine.
All right, I look forward to your comments at the second period. Katie, again, a reminder to everyone, this is on agenda topics only. Katie, is there anyone else online?
Yes, I have JH.
Yes, I have J H.
Okay, J H, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Jill Hettinger. Uh, I live in Lower Gwinnett and I have two students in Whistahick schools. I just wanted to echo the comments made by last speaker on the exercise that was conducted this, this morning in the high school regarding intersectionality. Um, I agree that is divisive and it is not appropriate to be taught in our schools. Uh, in addition, I just wanted to make a comment on social distancing. I would recommend that the board, before they implement any, um, social distancing, uh, further social distancing within the schools, do some more research because I do not believe that that is a practice that is currently employed in most other businesses, whereas it may still be lingering in some schools. I just don't know if that's a current practice for mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. All right, we'll move on to our next in-person speaker, Sandra Holder. Are you back? Or Dan Holder? No, okay. Then we will go on to the next one, John McDevitt.
Uh, the general.
Okay, great. I'll put you down for later. All right, then the next one is Sharon O'Donnell. Not here? Okay. Uh, John Kasani.
Okay, sorry, I'm here.
Oh, would you like to speak? You can come on up.
Hi, my name is Sharon O'Donnell and, uh, thank you for, uh, listening to what I have to say. And, uh, Mr. Uh, Bleefield, thank you so much for, uh, speaking on, on behalf of, uh, I believe, uh, majority of what Whistahick and, uh, community has been feeling these past, uh, maybe not two years, but at least a year um, about mask optional. And I do, I do applaud you for, for, you have been the only one that I've been listening to on Zoom and, and coming to some of these meetings that actually have been talking about like, this is enough. Um, everybody, yeah, the kids wear the masks in the school, toe the line, but then, uh, out in public, they are not. So let's just get that straight. Also too, uh, Dr. Chris Field, I noticed that anytime somebody mentions something that you did not like, you're writing things down vigorously. Just wanted to take note with that. The other thing is, um, I'm tired of my, uh, junior who, uh, goes to school, toes the line, and has to sit in the auditorium with her lunch on her lap. It's done. Please stop this nonsense with the masks on, the social distancing, enough is enough. Most of them are vaccinated. If you don't want your child to go to school without a mask on, fine. If you want your child to wear three masks, fine. Why does this have to happen? If my child can play the sport of water polo when she is spitting and all kinds of bodily fluids on each other for the past three years with not one instance of a COVID outbreak, I implore you, what is going on here? Also too, the past since September, there has not one outbreak in Bucks County school districts. I have access to a lot of teachers in their schools. Some kids wear masks, some kids do not. There, there's not been a problem. What, what's going on here? But I do thank you that I think the board and right now is finally, uh, waking up to what's been happening and is going to do the right thing and vote. So I do thank you. But again, um, just, uh, taking a little bit of note of, of what's going on with, uh, anytime somebody says something maybe not, uh, toeing the line here, I noticed like there's some vigorously scrolling. So just, uh, wanted to note that. But thanks a lot, everybody, and have a good night.
Great, thank you for those comments. Katie, is there anyone online?
Yes, PB.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, they lowered their hand. So now there's no one.
No one? Okay. Then we will move on to our next one in person, John Kasani. No? Uh, Haley Erle?
Hi, I'm Haley Erle. And I'm Marla Worthington. We wanted to talk about how at school, when you're like wearing your mask and you're doing work, it doesn't help you at all. Cause when you're trying to pay attention, it doesn't work because all you're focusing on is how you're breathing and how it's not like working. And, um, on the bus, I pull down my mask to breathe sometimes and uh, kids on the bus are, are bullying me for that and saying to put my mask up or else they're gonna tell the principal. We wanted to talk about how when we are at school, that masks are not helping. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone online?
Um, PB raised their hand again.
Okay, PB, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Paula Bladeck, Whitpain Township. Just to go back to the first, uh, set of parents who were speaking about masks, when there is data that proves masks are not effective, when there is data that proves that masks create physical and mental health of all children, it impacts them in detrimental way, when there is data that they interfere with effective instruction, when there is data that, that masks impede social and intellectual development of children, when there is data that neighboring school, as well as schools around the world, including China, back in May 2020, that have mask optional. And when there is, when the Supreme Court ended mask mandates in December of 2021, for the state of Pennsylvania, this is no longer about protecting our children. This is about egos of the adults and it's also about power. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your comments, Paula. Our next in-person speaker is Laura Lee Mary. Oh, oh, they were together. Okay, thank you. All right, well then, I don't have any other registered speakers. Nobody online?
I have, um, two hands raised online.
Okay, let's go ahead with those. Who's first?
I have Joey Connolly.
Okay, Joey, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, how are you doing? Uh, one thing I want to say is that masks are a total distraction from school and doing all your schoolwork. Like, I'll be sitting in math class and all I hear is, put your mask on, put your mask on. But I never like get instructions about math. It's always just about masks. So, uh, I got written up one time for wearing the mask with a chin strap because I feel like I've just beaten a dead horse at this point, you know? Like, I got all my vaccines, I'm all up to date. I gotta wear a mask for no reason, you know, like, I feel like I'm not gaining anything from it. Nobody's gaining anything from me wearing it. So yeah, that's, that's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. There's one more, okay? And who's this?
Dave Vossen.
Dave, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Dave Vossen from Lower Gwinnett. My comments are obviously on the district health and safety plan and masks. You know, our community is well aligned around the common goal of keeping kids in school in person and of course providing choice to the families. And I want to thank the board for its past efforts to do so. I've obviously seen the survey and saw the presentation tonight from Dr. Chris Field. I would remind the board that this is not a debate about whether or not to wear masks under the current transmission levels. Any policy that the board really adopts right here, almost any of them, we're going to be in mask optional very shortly. This is a debate about the policy itself. The board needs a policy that takes into account the changing conditions. If there's a high degree of virus or inability to run our services such as hospitals, there should be a requirement to wear masks. It's very reasonable and it should allow for mask optional if the conditions are low. If the board wants to improve the health and safety plan, perhaps decisions on masks could be more agile, like we switch them more often or we base them on the CDC transmission levels. So while I hope that the pandemic is waning, the science is not clear yet on that. There's certainly a scenario where this is beyond us in the community, but there's also a scenario where a new variant comes out and this just, uh, just becomes worse in there. We need a policy that can deal with another spike. And the science is just not clear at the moment. The jury's out. So finally, I just leave you with a metaphor here. You know, should the board adopt the policy that elementary kids should go outside regardless of the weather at recess or whether it's raining or snowing? You know, we can make the parents and kids decide it. And if kids come in wet and get the floors all wet and someone slips, we can just tell the kid to wear another boot. Such a policy would be ridiculous. Let's try to have a reasonable policy around masks. And while others may have a differing opinion, and I respect that, my recommendation to the board would be to adopt the CDC guidelines. And I, I really think that's, uh, that's the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Katie, do we have anyone else registered online?
No more registered speakers on Zoom.
Okay, well then we are done with our first public comment period. And we will go next to my board president report. I have no informational items this week. As far as action items, we have to approve, or next week we will be approving the school board public meeting date for 2022, 2023. And those are set forth in document six one. And those are for approval this week, Jim, or next week?
Monday.
Monday, that's what I thought. Okay. Uh, sorry, they can take a look at those dates, um, before next week's meeting. All right, next we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I am not unhappy to say I have no items for tonight's report.
All right, no problem. All right, well, next move to our assistant superintendent report, Dr. Dewan.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Um, for the assistant superintendent's report, I have no action items, but two informational items, uh, that I wanted to share this evening. Um, the first is an announcement that you may have already received via email about our upcoming parent workshop series to support parents and guardians and caregivers in understanding students' mental health needs. Um, this was an area of focus for our, um, last in-service day for training for teachers. Um, we've partnered with two local mental health agencies to offer parent workshops in the month of March. These will be held via Zoom on Wednesdays in March and our website has, excuse me, our website has more information. Topics include how to recognize signs of depression in children, how to help build self-esteem, how to engage with, uh, children using trauma-informed lens, and how to help teens cope during the pandemic. All of those workshops will be recorded and posted on our district's, uh, family resource page. For our next informational item, um, I have a brief, uh, presentation about the schools, um, what they've done to honor and acknowledge Black History Month. I'll just queue up the PowerPoint for that.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Okay, so we asked the schools to share with us just a little bit of, uh, what they've done in their schools, um, to honor and, um, acknowledge Black History Month for the month of February. So we'll start with Blue Bell. Uh, at Blue Bell, um, our students in all grade levels learned about, um, black artists, musicians, athletes, scientists, and other prominent figures in American history. Um, one example is, uh, students in fourth grade researched exceptional black people in history and captured what they learned in posters and PowerPoint presentations to share with their peers. Their goal was to spread awareness about the many impactful black people in history who are often not recognized and represented equally in American history. At Lower Gwinnett Elementary School, teachers in all grade levels again, uh, engaged students in various projects. A couple of examples, uh, students in second and fifth grade reported on the morning announcements every day to share research-centered or influential, influential black Americans of past and present. Um, Lower Gwinnett did a school-wide project to honor Martin Luther King Jr. It was one hundred, uh, hundreds of dreams for the world, and the hearts and dreams are in display in the main lobby. You can see the visual there. Um, in art, students learned about Alma Thomas, who's a mosaic artist, and so students created art inspired by Alma Thomas, and it's currently being featured on display in the Amber Library. At Shady Grove Elementary School, they continued to focus on highlighting diversity through literature in all grade levels. This year, they had forty special guest readers from, among the school and district staff, um, record themselves reading feature, uh, excuse me, reading texts that featured the experiences, accomplishments, and stories of black characters and black historical, historical figures. These readings illustrated a variety of cultures in, in the United States and around the world. Video recordings of the stories were shared in homerooms during library time and in encore classes. You can see some of the readers there. At Stony Creek, again, in all grade levels, uh, they engage in various activities and enjoy listening to stories about black Americans who made a difference in history. Uh, first graders used Pebble Go to research a famous black American and then presented a, um, a presentation on seesaw. They watched various videos on Brain Pop and Safe Tube. Uh, kindergartners also, um, studied the artists of Alma Thomas and again, um, made art that was modeling after Alma Thomas. Uh, kindergartners, um, let me go back. Kindergartners at Stony Creek, uh, reported that, um, Alma Thomas became an important role model for women, African-Americans, and older, more mature artists. She was the first African-American woman to have a solo exhibition at New York's Whitney Museum of American Art, and she exhibited her paintings at the White House three times. I promise to share that from our kindergarten. At the middle school, each department created a variety of learning experiences from learning about African-American artists, learning about African-American jazz musicians. Um, the word language department helped students learn about the influence of African-American music in Japanese popular culture. Students also learned about Afro-Latino culture, including music, dance, and food. ELA teachers included literature circles, circles where students read novels and highlighted the voices of African-Americans in history. They read poetry by some famous poets, Maya Angelou, Langston Hughes, to name a couple. And science teachers engaged students in projects. Uh, there was one project using a QR scavenger hunt that focused on African-American inventors and social studies teachers use various media to explore and analyze biographies, speeches, stories, and editorials about famous black people in history. My goodness, sorry about that. And at the Whistahick and High School, CASA hosted a school-wide Black History Month IE period. And at the end of that presentation, they hosted a trivia competition, taking a look at some of the facts about Black History Month. They also partnered with the TV students and created short segments for the morning show. Those segments highlighted and, um, and honored some impactful moments and outstanding people who have helped change the course of American history. Uh, lastly, CASA hosted, uh, hosted a general club meeting where thirty students of all racial and ethnic and cultural backgrounds came together and discussed current events globally and locally and how they felt impacted by these issues. They reported that this was a wonderful meeting. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Twenty board members have any questions or comments? Is there any way, Dr. Dewan, for you to share some of the artwork or presentations that students made? I got to see some because my kids are at Stony Creek, so I got to see some and they were just amazing. Is there any way you can upload some of them for board members to see?
I can certainly upload this, um, this PowerPoint presentation if that would be helpful. And I could, excuse me, check in to see if there are any, uh, student samples in terms of those PowerPoint presentations. Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah.
I could look into that.
Great, thank you so much. Sure.
I do have a quick question, Amy.
Okay, go ahead, Marshall.
First, in, in years past, different groups have come in and give us, given us live presentations. Dr. Dewan, will there be any live presentations during Black History Month, uh, or, or about Black History Month to the board? Or could there, could there be?
That is an example of something we haven't thought about with regard to the lifting of masking and mitigation. So the reason we haven't had that this year is because of the, the various mitigations in place. So tomorrow is, uh, March first. So I think we'll look to phase in the return of live presentations. Um, I just hadn't thought about that. Thank you.
That would be a great addition to go back to that. It was always lovely to have those presentations. I always looked forward to them.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, well then we will move ahead to, uh, the board solicitor report, Jeff.
Uh, yes. On the agenda for March seventh, uh, there will be a settlement agreement between family E, student E dash twenty-two, as shown in. student E-22, as shown in paragraph nine B. And I believe that was reviewed by the board in executive session, and we'll be seeking approval of that action at the next public meeting. And that concludes my report.
Okay, well, thank you, Jeff. Are there any comments or questions for Jeff? And we haven't really gotten to the settlement agreement, but any other questions or comments? No? Okay, thanks so much, Jeff. All right, next we'll move on to our board secretary report, Wade.
Thank you very much. No informational items, and at the next meeting we'll be requesting approval of the Racial Equity Oversight Committee minutes, the work session minutes, the public meeting minutes, and the most recent policy committee meeting minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Wade. Any questions or comments? All right, you want to go ahead with the board treasurer report?
Thank you. There is no informational item, and at the next meeting we'll presenting the acceptance and minuting the treasurer's report and asking for approval for January. Thank you.
Thanks, Wade. Any questions or comments? Okay, then we'll go on to the director of human resources report, Danielle.
Good evening, thank you. Tonight, there are no informational items. For your review, are six action items under twelve B. The first two action items include retirements, resignations, appointments, change of statuses, leave of absences, extracurricular changes, and volunteer additions. Action items three and four are seeking the ratification and approval of conference requests. Item five is for the approval of spring extracurricular activities. The final item, number six, is for the approval of the twelve-month employee holiday schedule for next school year. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Danielle. Any questions or comments? No? All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to our communications committee report, Zepi.
Katie, do you want to project things? So on campus, COVID-19 cases, this is for period February 14th to the 25th. We can see a total of nine across all of our buildings. And this is for students and staff in person. Sorry, moving on to off-campus. For cases in the same period, February 14th to the 25th, we had three cases of positive COVID-19 of students or staff and/or staff who are not on campus. And then when we're looking at our quarantining isolation, we can see here our snapshot for February 24th, we had a total of seven students, sorry, seven students who were in isolation. And we were at a 0.14 COVID-related reason for out of school. And then for staff, happy to report that it was a zero. So we've been continuing to see a decline in our numbers. I know we went through that really quickly, but in light of current events, I felt like we could kind of whiz by.
Are there any questions or comments for Zepi?
Do we ever calculate those instances per 100,000?
Katie. Do we ever calculate that per 100,000?
The answer is no.
Okay, well, if we did, over those two weeks, those nine cases, assuming about 5,000 students and staff, that would be 180 cases for 100,000. Or 90 per week, which would put us back up in the, for the school district alone, we would be back up in the higher rate. But it's just something to think about.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, Dave, just to clarify that, the CDC on the new guidelines did raise the threshold to 200 per 100K. I know that doesn't like help the actual number, but just to clarify, you know, that standard now.
Agreed. Thanks. Something to keep an eye on.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll move on to our curriculum and technology committee report, Ronnie.
All right, we have both informational items and action items. After Dwan, I'm going to give them over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, two informational items and five action items for which we'll seek board approval next Monday. Regarding our two informational items, our first item is the Foundation's instructional resources that are outlined in document 141A have been reviewed and are being recommended to support the core reading instructional program and reading interventions for kindergartners, first graders, and second graders. It is our recommendation that these resources be purchased to support the delivery of K-2 English Language Arts curriculum. Foundations is a research-based program that supports phonemic awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, reading fluency, vocabulary, and spelling. It's intended to be combined with a core literature-based language arts program, which is what we have in place now, which is Wonders for an integrated and comprehensive approach to reading and spelling. So this would not be replacing Wonders. This would be in addition to Wonders to ensure that we're shoring up our students' skills in those core, in those core areas. The Foundation's resources will be available for public review in the Office of Teaching and Learning between March 1st, and we'll seek board approval on April 4th at the public board meeting. Anyone who's interested in viewing those instructional resources can contact the Office of Teaching and Learning to schedule an appointment. The next informational item is our Special Education State Plan for 2020 through 2023. So every three years, districts have to prepare and submit a special education plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Due to the pandemic, PDE extended the submission deadline for all districts who were on this cycle to June 2022. And so that's why this plan from 2020 to 2023 is now being developed and available for public review. The plan includes special education programs and services within and outside our district's geographic boundaries. It includes compliance status on state monitoring measuring, the special education professional development opportunities, areas of disproportionality that we've been identified from the state, and how the district strives for least restrictive environments. The Special Education State Plan was posted on the Student Services page of the district website on February 24th for the thirty days for public review. And we will seek board approval of the plan at the regular public meeting on April 4th, following that thirty-day public review period. As you may know, our board meeting on March 28th, we are scheduled to share a presentation of our special education programs and services. And at that meeting on March 28th, Dr. Heim Lusowski will join us for that special education board presentation. So that concludes the informational items. If there are any questions, I'll take those. Otherwise, I'll move on to the action items.
Dr. Dwan, I just, I don't have a question. I have a quick comment. The foundations, I absolutely love that program. I used it last year with my children when I homeschooled them, and my daughter has some reading disabilities, and it's good for all kids, and I'm really happy that we're moving to that. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Want to move on to action items?
Yes, so these are the five action items that will seek approval on March 7th. Item 14B1 is, will be seeking a request for two extended field trips. One's for the High School Future Business Leaders of America, for them to compete in a state leadership competition in Hershey, Pennsylvania. That'll be during spring break from April 10th through April 13th. We anticipate twenty-six students will qualify to attend. The other is the High School Ultimate Frisbee Team to attend the YULA Ultimate Frisbee Tournament in Arlington, Virginia in March. That'll be over a weekend, and we anticipate fourteen students will attend that event. Item 14B2, we, our district-wide telephone system needs to be reconfigured. And so this pricing of $11,760.50 includes the cost for licensing, reconfiguration, implementation, and testing of the installation of that new system. The process will be scheduled outside of school hours, and the company that's going to, this company is going to reconfigure our internal phone system to accept that new wiring. So that's something that we have to do. Our current system is no longer going to be able to continue the way it is. So we need to make that upgrade, or the company needs to make those upgrades, and so we need to move forward with that. And item 14B3 is, we'll be seeking approval to award a three-year contract for local and long-distance telephone services through, to win stream business, not to seek $45,000. So for this item, we usually go month-to-month, but because of those upgrades, we now have to sign a three-year contract due to the upgrades, and so because of that, we need to seek board approval. Charges for local and long-distance services will remain in line with current costs, and so this is not an additional annual cost. It's a cost that we already approved. We're coming to the board for approval because we need to have that three-year contract in place. Item 14B4 and 14B5 are related to students who are needing outplace services. And so item 14B4 is going to be seeking ratification because that student has already started. And item 14B5 will be seeking approval prior to the starting students begin. And that information is outlined in document 144 and 145.
Thank you, Dr. Dwan. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
I have a couple of questions. How does the trips work? Do the students pay these costs, or do we cover the cost for these students?
I can get that information. I can't speak to that right now, but I can certainly look into that to provide you with an answer in terms of who's accruing the cost of this trip.
Yeah, so it's twofold. One is if the student needs to cover the cost and they can't, do we have some sort of assistance? Because $800 seems like a very big amount. Conversely, if we're paying $800, I want to understand, are we being fair and equitable across all the different programs and all the different, you know, activities, and is everybody getting a fair shot of funding for things that we're paying? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right, well, thank you so much again. And now we'll move on to facilities and transportation. Joe?
Thank you. We have one informational item this evening, and it's related to the Blue Bell Elementary School capacity conversation timeline. This is a series of dates that Jim had previously shared with us, all with a goal towards determining a course of action for dealing with the projected overcapacity at Blue Bell Elementary School. And I guess if anyone had any questions about, there's several meetings planned over the next few months. Any questions for Wade or Jim about any of that? Okay. And then we have a series of action items provided them for voting next week, and I'll ask Wade to maybe do a quick run-through of those items, please.
Sure, thank you. The B1 is the excess and obsoleting of primarily technology equipment that we're trying to sell and/or dispose of in an appropriate manner. Two is the new mechanical systems at Stony Creek and the contract related to keeping them up and running. Landscape and maintenance for 2022, three, and four is normal. We do three-year contracts. It's up, and that is the results of the bid for that. Item four is somewhat related to a one that we just talked about. Breslin has put through a request for $30,000 for review work related to Act 34 and $15,000 for schematic. And part of this schematic would be put towards the overall contract if it went forward. And that information is provided in document 15-4, all related to providing board and public information with a potential project for Blue Bell. Item five is just a small contract for additional services at Stony Creek based on modification to a wall that needed additional architectural support.
Thanks, Wade. Any questions about any of those action items?
Yeah, just one. So, you know, Wade, I hate throwing things away, so we'll try to find someone who can take these obsolete items that are obsolete to us, who might be able to use them for themselves. And then we'll definitely find a safe way to recycle them if we can't.
So it's actually probably even more positive than that. These, these are, we advertise that we're selling them, and then we say, here are the good things that you have to, you know, tell us how much money you want to give us, and you're going to take away and dispose of all this stuff that we want to get rid of. So we're, we've received the bids. They're not part of this, but it's positive. We're going to receive a fair amount of money for all that and dispose of stuff at the same time in an appropriate manner. So that's, thank you.
Love it. Thank you very much for that.
All right, that's the facilities report. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Joe. All right, we'll move on to our finance committee report. David?
Thank you, Amy. We have one informational item, which is a recap of the February 15th budget workshop that was held here during that committee meeting. We heard from Wade and his team, got an overview, a top-side view of the budget that we're starting with. We considered a list of new programs or items that had been requested to potentially be included in the budget. Wade covered an overview of the revenue that we could expect for the year. And then he and Jerry covered the five-year capital projects plan that we have rolling over each year to plan to do improvements in each building as they become necessary. And then also we covered capital project transfers, the debt service that we are hopefully continuing to build into the budget each year. And then finally, we covered plant operations and maintenance, and we will meet again for more topics March 14th at 6:30. And Wade, if you'd like to elaborate on any or all of those, please do. And if there are questions, Wade can answer them.
What are the topics that we're covering at the next meeting, Wade?
There, some of the educational areas, special education will be a biggie, and then tech, et cetera. So it'll be some of the curricular beef.
Will the documents, the agenda and the supporting documents be posted as part of the committee minutes when they're approved?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have four action items to consider for approval in the next meeting. B1 is approval of the financial reports per document 161. Number two is approval of instructional supply bids for 2021, 2022. Is that correct? Furniture, general, music, and science?
I think you're correct. I think all of those should be referring to 22, 23, and included. I agree with that comment for item three as well.
So approval of item three is approval of the proposed 2022, 2023 Montgomery County IU Membership Services Budget per document 163, and then finally approval of the list of payments issued for the month ending January 31st of this year for documents 164. And that's all.
Thanks, David. Does anyone have any questions or comments? No? All right, well, thank you so much again. We'll move on next to our policy committee report. Marshall?
Thank you. There are two informational items, including a review of what we're doing as well as a recap of the last meeting. As we all know, we are now in the 300 series in the policies, the overhaul of the entire district policy. The 300 series having to do with staffing. At the last meeting, we reviewed multiple policy committee policy review as well as recommendations and deletions. The ones we reviewed, interestingly, we learned what WASA is. If you didn't know what that is, it is the Whisthaken Administration and Supervisors Association. Those are the things you miss if you don't come to the policy meeting, so I urge you to enjoy that going forward. We discussed provisions regarding absences, issues regarding pay, professional education plans and professional development, as well as sick time and Family Medical Leave Act. There were a couple of district recommended changes, including attendance by E-meetings as well as a record management plan. And then there were several deletions up for review based on the implementation of the updates that we have. So based on that, the action items for tonight is the review of what we just went over and did, which will be voted on at the next meeting. I know everybody has a tough time with this. I do too. I do too, but stick with us. We have several readings in order to get it approved. And we'll be approving the first reading at the next meeting of what we just went over tonight, which is a recap of what we went over a couple of weeks ago. And if you didn't get it, I'm sure somebody else on the board can talk to you about it because I'm done. So with that, that concludes the policy.
Thank you so much, Marshall. Are there any comments or questions?
Could you talk to her that again?
It'll be online at a later date, Dave, and you can enjoy it to your heart's content.
One thing that's always available and super helpful is the recap document seventeen dash one A, which gives a few sentences about each of the policy changes being considered.
And I apologize, I didn't go through it completely, but the whole board is welcome to review it at their leisure.
We appreciate the highlights version. Thank you.
All right, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll move on now to the racial equity oversight committee report. Paul?
Thank you, Amy. The racial equity and oversight committee met on February fourteenth in a special Valentine's Day edition. Despite that, the meeting was well-attended. We had a presentation from the administration on professional learning opportunities for staff. And we also discussed two prior presentations by the administration that included action items from the AGT Y P for presentation on January thirty-first. And we also discussed feedback and ideas from the presentation delivered on January twenty-four R E O C meeting on disproportionality of AP courses. And so I'm going to ask Dr. Dwan, if she doesn't mind, sharing some more details on the administration's presentation.
Thank you. Yes, as Mr. Badger mentioned, the focus of the presentation was on professional learning. And we started with reviewing why professional learning is so important. We reviewed the history of professional learning in the district specifically related to equity and cultural responsiveness. We shared out the professional development plan for last year as well as the current plan for this year. We talked about best practices for professional learning and the impact on students' learning and their skills and development. And as Mr. Badger said, we always leave time for feedback from the committee. Our next meeting in March will focus on curriculum for culturally, for cultural responsiveness and equity, looking at content, text and resources. So we encourage people to join that meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Dwan. And if David or Joe have anything else they'd like to add?
Doesn't look like it, no.
Okay, that's good, my report, thank you.
Thanks so much, Paul. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Paul? No? All right, well, then we will go ahead and move into our report of board representatives. Marshall, extracurricular?
I have nothing to report as I was not invited to any extracurricular meetings this past month. Maybe now that we're optional, I will be. I don't know, but I'll let you know once I hear from them.
Thank you. And I do have MCIU Board of Directors and Legislative Committee reports, but I'm going to actually put the link to this meeting, hold off and give those next week at this portion of the meeting. So we'll move on to Ronnie or David. Do either of you have anything to report on North Monco?
Ronnie, your microphone?
I should put it on, then you could hear me. North Monco is doing well. Everyone is masked. They are having supply chain issues like everyone. And they're most excited about the Pennsylvania Skills Test in Hershey. Thirty North Monco kids are going, one of whom is running for state office. So that's the North Monco news.
David, do you have anything to add?
We did hear about the budget that we're considering that was introduced at the last meeting and will be up for approval, I guess, at the next meeting. And Whistahicken's contribution to that will be an additional, I think it's seventy-eight thousand from last year's contribution. Is that right? That's it.
Great, thank you. Did anyone have any questions or comments? I did have one question. You mentioned that they, are they still requiring masks at North Monco?
Well, this was from our last meeting on the twenty-third, so I don't really know.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we'll go on to PSBA liaison. Is that the, nothing to report? All right, well, then we will move on to our second public comment period. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll have five speakers on any particular topic. You have three minutes. And please want to approach in the podium, state your name, give me to spell your residence and the topic on which you'll be speaking. All right, so first behalf in person, John McDevitt.
Thank you. My name's John McDevitt. I live in Whitene Championship. And for starters, I have a son at Blue Bell Elementary. He was in second grade and he'll be really thrilled not to have to wear the mask. It's something he's been looking and talking about for a while. So he tends to play a lot of sports and get sweaty and the mask falls and drops. And, you know, he's my only child, so I know he probably gets more germs from wearing the mask than not wearing the mask. But that's just him. So anyway, that's very good news. But one of the couple of the other speakers tonight talked about different people in the community having, you know, needing to come together. And I get that. I totally met a lot of people in the community. And I think a lot of the angst a lot of people have is transparency. I'm in the investment management business and I get questions from clients all the time about this regulation or this investment restriction or strategy, whatever. And you really have to be patient and fully transparent with clients about the question, about your standards and guidelines. And I think a lot of the parents feel like sometimes people in the administration are short with them or inconsistent. And they hear one thing one time and then they hear something different at a meeting. And if I could urge the board just to try to really be sensitive to people in the community. And if you're giving them kind of bad news, just kind of, you know, stick to the standards and be fully transparent about it. And then just one final last thing is about the, Colleen had brought up the identity wheel. So I really urge the board to take a close look at that and be very serious about critical race theory. She brought up a very compelling evidence of that, of a curriculum designed to divide the students, which is something that the school board really should be interested in and take a good, hard look at. Because any curriculum should never be designed to divide students, to unify students. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sean. Katie, do we have anyone online?
Yes, Cara Frederick.
Cara, okay, wonderful. Cara, you can go ahead and mute yourself.
Hi, thank you. As I was saying before, when I completely embarrassed myself in front of like a million people, my name is Cara Frederick. I live in Blue Bell and my comment tonight is in regards to the athletic fields at the four elementary schools that are part of Whistaken School District. The reason I'm bringing up this topic tonight is because I'm the softball commissioner for WRA, Whitene Recreation Association. And in the past four years as commissioner for the sport, we've seen the program grow exponentially. We had four teams a few years ago. We had seven teams in spring twenty twenty-one. And as of today, with registration still open, we have seventeen teams. With this growth comes a need for resources. I took a look. I went by the four elementary schools and between them, they have six baseball fields and zero softball fields. While this imbalance or oversight may have not mattered as much in the past, it definitely matters now. School district owns the fields. You decide what happens to them. And so basically, my request is to open up this topic and this need for equity, open this up for discussion. I know some people are probably thinking, why is she bringing up this now, five weeks before the season starts? Why didn't she bring that up sooner? And basically, I would have never been able to predict these numbers ever. And it's bringing a dire need for the fields, you know, at this point. I'm not sure how the process works or do I need to follow up? Or can I reach out to somebody to discuss this in greater detail or who can I partner with? But that is my goal. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Karen. Again, I apologize for the earlier confusion. I'm glad you stuck with us. Next, in person, we have Carmina Taylor.
I'm completely exhausted. I cannot even believe it. I have two things. It may go over three minutes. I didn't want to be interrupted because I've waited too long. My first comment is on policy eight thirty-two. I was astonished today when I looked at the agenda and realized that it was part of the minutes of the other meeting. I have some questions that I would like to be answered. Number one, who drafted the policy? Because there's language in there that doesn't make sense to me. Usually, when you develop an equity policy, you have a position statement beyond the commitment. You have a practice and you delineate what the practice is going to look like so you can determine what the measurable outcomes are. I don't see it. The next question is, when is the Educational Equity Action Plan going to be sent out to the community? I just think it's unbelievable with all the years that I've been talking about this issue. I've been on the board meetings. I didn't hear this this get passed, that this does not become something that you specifically highlight and go through the language for people to understand. The last piece, I want all the school board members to really pay attention to the definition of the terms that you have in this policy. You have not exhibited this as a district. You have not exhibited cultural competency. You have not exhibited cultural proficiency. You have not exhibited an equity lens. You have not exhibited implicit, explicit bias. You put, you put these definitions in your policy. You need to demonstrate that. And the fact that it's here and it's been approved and there's been no public discussion, how you're going to make all these definitions in your policy be a practice and measure it is astonishing. So I have a minute left, even though I should be talking more than a minute. I just want to say for the record, it is absolutely an atrocity that whether it's Carmina Taylor, whether it's the Alumni Association through Carmina Taylor, whether it's the Movement for Black and Brown Lives, that you continually ignore the overtures to engage with the entities. We invited you to the Alumni Hall of Fame ceremony. No one responded. No one did anything. That's unacceptable. I invite you to look at the Facebook page and hear the stories of the black alumni and how they were critically impacted by being a student athlete in this school district. They are a stakeholder in this school district for the rest of their life. It should never be questioned ever again. We are having a second installment of the Hall of Fame and we are going to invite you again. And I behoove you all, someone to represent this board, to validate the existence of the people that have been here before. It's unacceptable. And I want to just say, for all the barking between the Stony Creek parents, these parents, I've been coming here for sixteen years. And for sixteen years, I've been disrespected. I haven't barked. I haven't yelled. I haven't done anything. And I am still disrespected. I'm not going to bring twenty black people to demand you to do the right thing. Four of my board members on the Alumni Association tried to get into this call and they couldn't get into this call. So they would have been here with me. They would have been here. It's not only Carmina.
Carmina, the three minutes is-
I know it's over, Amy. I absolutely know it's over. I had two, two subjects on there and you have to have a policy about that. Please let me finish and I will walk away.
Your three minutes is up. You can feel free to email the board any-
You don't answer my emails. You don't acknowledge my emails.
The three minutes is up, Carmina. Each speaker gets three-
So now you're going to have the police come and get me if I don't stop talking?
I'm not going to have the police get you.
Okay.
You can feel-
Okay.
Three minutes is up, though. We're going to move on in the agenda.
Was everybody treated like that before?
Everyone abide by the three-minute rule. Katie, is there anyone online?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we're going to go ahead and move on next to board comments. Do any board members have any comments to see things?
I have many.
Go ahead, Steffi.
I know we're all exhausted. These are all action items for next week. I don't know what intersectionality is, so please educate me next week on that. Health and safety update. Can you just outline for us next week all the parameters that, you know, we didn't get to discuss? Like quarantining, isolation, what do you do after? Like what happens if there's an incident of us? Like just so that the public understands what the path is forward. I would like for us to have an update on whatever concerns or calls we get from families in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours due to this change. I think we should all be made aware of what's happening. So for communication committee, I would like to propose that we move away from COVID numbers. If people want to know the COVID numbers, they could get to the website and get that information. I would like to propose instead that we start talking about the school start time. And since I'm a committee member on that with Ronnie, I would propose that's something we can change to. And then the cap number of attendance at the auditorium. Please, Wade, recall my memory. What did we determine? Do we have a cap at the auditorium now or we do not? And as a result of CDC, can we make sure that the school, the high school musical can have no capacity issue?
Yes, they are aware of that. It's only by far code.
It's only by fire code and no other COVID restrictions.
That's correct.
Beautiful. And then can somebody get back to Cara about the softball fields? I want to make sure that, you know, the women, the growing women in our community who want to play softball have a way to do it. I know nothing about the sport, so.
Yeah, so someone will reach out to her and tell her to talk to me. I don't think it's going to be a happy conversation.
Yeah, and I don't expect that we'll have a resolution for this season, but we need to kind of start thinking about it. If we have more women wanting to play this sport and we're not supporting it, how are we equitable?
Right, sure.
Just, Steffi, just a quick comment. I know the difficulties that Cara faces with softball. It's not the only one. If you, with WRA, you're dealing with about four to five, four thousand individual participants. It is a problem. But for instance, the organizations I helped with Children with Special Needs, we didn't get any court time over this winter because, for basketball. And we had to find other, other opportunities. So it is, it is an ongoing problem because WRA is a huge organization, at this point at which I'm a part of. And it is tough to find that, but it is something that should be addressed.
Yeah, I mean, I understand if we don't have a resolution for this season, but I think we need to have a plan. I mean, I mean, there's an uptick clearly. So we gotta think about it maybe for the next season. I don't know. I know nothing about softball, by the way.
Any other comments or questions?
Just a-
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just have one question to, you know, bank off what Steffi just asked. The intersectionality, I'd like to know a little bit more about like what classes that it's being taught in and the reasons and what it is actually. So I'm right with that.
Marshall, you have a comment?
Just very briefly, as we know, halfway around the world, there was a war going on. And while we sit here and debate and discuss and sometimes fight about issues of getting our kids back into school, there are parents and kids who are fighting for their lives. And so you don't want that in any circumstance. So I just wanted to say that my thoughts are with all of those who are affected by an awful, awful situation that hopefully ends very soon.
Thank you for that, Marshall. Any other comments or questions?
Amy, I have a quick comment.
Yes, Dan?
I just wanted to thank the administration and my fellow board members for all the hard work this week. I think we've all been really overwhelmed and it's been a challenging week, I think, for everybody. So I just wanted to say thank you. So I just wanted to say thank you, all my fellow board members and the administration who I'm getting to know. I actually just think you guys are all really great, and I think you need to hear that right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And Zephy, I have a question for you. The musical next weekend, can you share with everybody the dates of the musical?
Oh, yes. Can I do a plug for the High School Musical? It starts on Thursday, 7:00 PM. There's another one on Friday at 7:30 PM. And then there's another one on Saturday at 7:30 PM, this Thursday, Friday, Saturday. It's at the High School Musical. It's, I'm going to pronounce it wrong because I can't pronounce anything right. Sondheim on Sondheim? Did I get it right? Thank you. So it's like all of his best works compiled into one place. So you'll get like a little bit of West Side Story. You'll get like a little bit of all his best work. And it's an honor because he did pass away this year. So it's supposed to be amazing, and I'm going to be there every night. So.
Where would you want to get tickets for that?
I could get some tickets. Hit me up.
I am definitely looking forward to this. I'm going to be going with my kids. And we just saw a seat moana at the middle school, and it was amazing. So I'm really looking forward to this week's performance.
I must say, I am a performing arts buff, so I'm really excited to see all of this stuff come back. So I'm so happy for all the kids.
All right. Any other questions or comments? No? All right. Well, then can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Thank you. Aye.